Good afternoon. It is now 4:00 PM, August 6, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the city as housing assets accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez? Mayor Garcia?
I don't see anyone in the audience that would like to address the council, therefore, can we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have only one item this evening. It is anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 549-56.9D2. And the facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. And it's on behalf of the city council. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report at either the conclusion of the closed session or the commencement of the 5 o'clock session.
Thank you. So at this time, we will recess to our closed session and a regular session will convene at 5:00 PM, August 2, 2019. And before I start, I would like to say that being that it's National Night Out and in order for our council to be able to participate and meet and greet our police officers, we started our meeting one hour earlier. So I hope we do have an opportunity to go out there and do a little mingling with the public and our police officers. So at this time, I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the city as housing assets accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez? Mayor Garcia?
And at this time, could we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had only one item this evening. It was anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 549-56.9D2. And the facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. At this time, there's no reportable action with respect to that item.
Thank you. The invitation this evening will be delivered by Pastor Des, and I'm sorry, I don't have a last name, of Victorville First Church of the Nasserine. And the pledge of allegiance will be led by Police Chief Rick Bassinger. So please stand.
Father, we thank you for this breath of life that you have so graciously given to us. For the ability to live in a country when we are able to be heard, we ask your blessings upon us this evening and those upon who are called to service and upon those who are here to listen and to hear. So thankful for the privilege to live in this wonderful country. So Father, in the name of Jesus, our Savior, bless this session in Jesus' name. Amen.
So I will ask our city clerk to please present the agenda to council and any revisions to the agenda.
The Victorville City Council welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment or on a particular item will be required to fill out a white speaker card located in the lobby and give it to the city clerk. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council, not to the members of the audience. In accordance with state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on any non-agenda items. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the presiding officer. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any items on this council that might be a conflict of interest to any council member or board members should be identified at this time. Are there any items on the agenda this evening that need to be identified? We do not have any appeal hearings this evening. Therefore, we move on to public hearings. And Item B1, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against a general plan amendment, a zone change and a conditional use permit to allow for a church and associated services at 16534 Victor Street. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council find the proposal exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to sequel section 15061B3 and 15301, adopt resolution number 19-059, approving the general plan amendment, introduce ordinance number 2393 by title only, approving the zone change, and adopt resolution number 19-060, approving the conditional use permit.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any questions of staff by council members? You have a two-minute time limit. Any questions? None?
Yes. So my question to staff is, does the city have any records of how many CUPs in regards to its equivalency to the request that we have tonight has been done? Any figure approximation or actualization of numbers?
Not offhand, but that's certainly something we can research and follow up with the council on.
It would be nice to provide some history in terms of data so that council can independently make choices. I've requested this on multiple occasions, and I think the history of something of this nature would definitely help council to make a decision if it's been done in the past and if it hasn't and it's one of its first of its kind, how shortly that has been done. So I would appreciate that as data provided in the next council meeting in terms of something of this nature for CUPs.
Thank you, yes. That's actually the first time I've heard of such a request from the council. Certainly, if the council so desires, we can provide that without a problem.
As an individual council member, I would like that data in my inbox for this particular item since we're going to wait on council to make a vote on that.
Can we take a vote on it now?
No, we're not going to vote on that.
I don't know if any council member has any problem with this.
Yeah, they don't. So now, as individual council member, I'd like the hard copy of that information in my inbox if that would be so kind.
My suggestion would be from here on, when you have a suggestion, say it's my suggestion at council.
No, as a council member, we work as a body. But if we don't work as a body, then I want to work as an individual receiving the data to make a rational information.
Okay, I will continue. Are there any other questions?
So Keith, are you going to be able to supply that? I'm not finished with my question.
Go ahead.
I have two minutes, and it hasn't been called out, so you're out of order, ma'am. Two minutes, if they're up, I can no longer speak, but my two minutes are up. They're not, so for the public manager, the city manager, I would like hard copies in my inbox. Would you be able to supply that to Councilmember Gomez? That's a question, city manager. So I am sure Gloria was able to express it, but if I need to with my two-minute time limit, I'm going to say that what I'm asking for was, does the city have any records of how many CUPs in regards to the equivalency to this request has been done? For this particular, how many have we approved? This is the first of its kind. If it is, I would like to know if it's very casual and always done, then I just need the data to show it. That's all I'm asking for.
Specific to this site or citywide?
Specific to a CUP for churches from a C1 so we can be adopting what we're adopting today specifically and what we've done in the past. Is this new, not new? I don't know. This is the first of its kind that I've seen come in within the last three years, so I'm requesting information to make a rational opinion. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
If I may, just in terms of procedure, because I'm not sure exactly what we should be doing here, and I certainly wouldn't want to deny any council member necessary information, but it's always been my understanding in working in governance that you cannot unilaterally direct any staff member to do anything, that those types of things come as a result of direction from the council. So I don't know if I need a legal response on that. I just want to make sure that we're doing some, we're proceeding carefully.
That is correct. That's set forth in the municipal code as well as in the policy manual.
So as a point of order, I'm being asked as a council member to make a public request. And that's what I gather from this information from Mrs. Jones and the city attorney.
What question?
My question is this. I noticed that in terms of the resolution, we have a question of going to commercial, and this is a church. And I noticed also the purchase of a college, but it did not verify or even list the associate services that are going to be provided by this church. My question is, what type of services are being included if we were to change this? My question is, because it's come to my attention of the idea of a homeless center on 7th and Victor. And I'm wondering, is this a part of that so-called idea, or is this simply a question of the services of the church, the attendance of their congregation to, let's say, to the college? Are the classes going to be offered? What is going to be offered on this that they require .90 acres to be changed to commercial? What is the intent when a church is nonprofit?
Good evening. Yes, I can speak to that. So the action to allow for the C1 zone would conditionally allow for churches. So as part of the proposal today is a conditional use permit. So within that conditional use permit, they're limited to what they've told us in their application. So there is going to be like a Bible study, but there's no other additional services where there'd be like a soup kitchen or anything like that. There is conditions that if they were to have a temporary event, that they would come and get a temporary use permit from the city.
My only concern is, in regards to the changing of the zoning, is that by permitting them to go to commercial, are we also implying that whatever services associated to the church is also being approved by the change of the zoning? That's my question. Is this just a simply zone change, or does it include services that are to be included within the church? Because it said "associated services." I question that.
Yeah, it's actually both. You're taking action on to change the zone of the property to C1, which would conditionally allow for assembly uses such as churches. And then with the proposal today is also a conditional use permit that outlines what actual services are provided. So it said "associated services," but that was just in like the general description. The conditions of approval for the conditional use permit go over the hours of operation and in this case, the like the Bible study classes that would be included.
These services be other than religious? My question is, it's an open-ended statement, and I don't understand when they say "associated services." I just want to make certain that what we're doing is giving them more property to be able to serve their congregation. That's my intent. But I'm asking, if we agree to this, does it open another category where they can do other than church services enticing such as classes, teaching, and so forth? That's my question.
Yeah, so they did stipulate in their conditional use permits, which is before you know that they are asking for, in addition to their normal services, where the congregation would come to service, they would have other services like, in this case, a class. Yes.
Thank you very much.
What's that? Yes.
All churches located in the C1?
No, there are churches that are in non-conforming areas of the city that, yeah.
That phrase, it's got to be in a C1. So this is conforming to a church.
Yes, C1 or within our residential districts, they're also permitted with a conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? I opened the public hearing, and I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, can you read the title of the ordinance number 2393?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville adopting the zone change portion of case number PLA-N19-00021, a zone change from CA Administrative Office Professional and C2 General Commercial to C1 Neighborhood Service Commercial with an environmental exemption on property located on approximately .90 acres and at 16534 Victor Street.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move staff recommendations.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to consent calendar. I have to announce that consent calendar items C1 through C7 may be approved with one motion. A council member may comment on items or ask for minor clarification without the need for pulling the item for separate consideration. Only items requiring detailed deliberations should be pulled for separate consideration. So we have items C1 through C7.
Move approval of consent calendar.
Second.
I'm going to pull items C2, 3, and 4.
Oh, that was 2, 3, and 4. Madam Mayor, may I venture a motion then? So I move that the council and the boards that we serve are in the capacity that we serve on other boards to take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the consent agenda. That's items C1 through C7 with the exceptions of C2, 3, and 4 that will be handled separately.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia, to approve items C1 through C7 except for C2, 3, and 4. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
So I need clarification. C1, C5, and C7, pulling C2, 3, and 4? Not voting equally on all of them, and that's what it appears that was said.
We pulled 2, 3, and 4.
Right. So you're not interpreting as a vote in one, right?
We're pulling 2, 3, and 4, so we're taking a vote on 1, 5, 6, and 7.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now I move on to written communications.
We need to go through C2, C3, and C4.
Oh, we still need to do.
For item C2, I have several questions. Would staff please address the concept of equity share in general terms for the benefit of understanding the specifics to A) the substitution of trustee and deed of reconvenance, B) resolutions number 9-065 in the original deed of trust in the promissory note? And after your generalization summary, please contextualize the 23,000 assistance money that was provided to the participant along with addressing the 15,400 interests, which is the equity share that was gained from this loan to the first time, from the first time home buyers with, who have very low, low and moderately low income, which I'm assuming are subsidized by federal monies, state monies, and local fundings. And you can correct me if that last portion of subsidies were only pertinent to certain states or certain administrations and not others. And what was the particular case equity share, actual equity, the accumulated, and I refer to page 103 to 104? The percentages that were based on the map loans that were relative to the property purchase price? In other words, was the property purchase price a market value or the appraised value of the time of the purchase? Has there in the past or currently been any considerations from the city and other agencies, any agency stakeholders to reevaluate the map loan and other controlling documents such as loan requirements to further alleviate the equity share calculations to further benefit the assistance that's provided to individuals who are very low, low to moderately low home buyers for the first time? Was a participant notified of this consent calendar? And at any point, has the equity share been considered an idle fund? If so, where has this been invested and what does Fund 205 refer to? And definitely C4, there is definitions that are applicable, but they're affecting the bonds and the names. And if you can go back and tell me how specifically, since the reporting doesn't actually show
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, this is a subject that we have had discussions about in the past, and very specifically addressing the questions, trying to describe, define, consider revising equity share. That's something that we discussed earlier in the year, and it was recommended by the council that as a part of the budget, upcoming budget that we eventually approved in June, that information be provided, and the council was to consider if it wanted to take on continued deliberation as to whether or not it wanted to modify the program. That information was shared just before, I believe, the budget being approved. It was at our workshop. It was exhaustive, extensive amount of information that not only described the history but explained how the program worked. So staff believes at this point, answering the questions as to having reviewed it, have we considered it, I certainly have taken the no response from this council as a lack of interest in pursuing any changes any further, but certainly if the council's position on that changes, certainly we can reconsider where we're at with the program. I think, notwithstanding everything else that was mentioned, the other item that was asked was with respect to describing the equity share. The equity share is an amount that's identified in addition to the principal amount that was originally loaned to the applicant. And in this particular case, it serves as the interest earnings, if you will, as any other loan would generate. But in this particular case, it's calculated based upon what we define as equity share, which is a proportionate share of the appreciation and the value of home. And with that, there's a measurable, there's a percentage that's applied that equates to a dollar amount, and that becomes the interest earnings associated with the investment made by the agency or the city in originally loaning those monies. And I think the other comment or question I heard was with respect to describing reconvenance. And effectively, because this loan has been paid off and satisfied both in form of principal and interest, because these involve documents that were recorded on real property, on real estate, once satisfied, you actually have to remove those documents from title. So effectively, the reconvenance is that of documents that were as originally securing our loan interest in the property.
Madam Mayor, may I? So on this particular one, the matter before us is really just dealing with the paperwork after the fact. The loan receivable has been settled. That wouldn't be settled unless the seller was amenable to all the terms of the sale as it relates to the city, correct?
That's correct. At this point, we're really procedural. You know, what we have done in structuring the program so that we don't hold up an escrow, a potential sale among buyer and seller, we've actually established the program and such where so long as the amounts are fulfilled, we'll go ahead and fulfill the repayment administratively. And then because it's a real document, a real recorded document, we'll after the fact come to the council to ask for the release. So at this point, it's merely paperwork procedural at this point.
So at this time, I need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move staff recommendation on items C2, 3, and 4.
Third, second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to our written communications. Item D1, general fund legal expenses. The recommendation is any action is at the discretion of the city council. And I will request Councilmember Jones to present this item, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I thank my colleagues for allowing me to place this matter on the agenda. Briefly, the council directed the city manager by way of its unanimous vote this past June 18 to provide the council with a categorical breakdown of the general fund legal expenses for a period of up to the past 12 months. Stated purposes were to help us gain a better understanding of the basis for the 2019-2020 budget appropriation and to help us remain abreast of expected trends in spending. We have before us a requested report that covers a period of 12 months. Madam Mayor, hand the item back to you.
Are there any questions of staff at this time from council members? And it's a two-minute time limit?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do. I have 10 questions, and so to front-load my colleagues, I have timed them such that I should fall well within the two-minute time limit once I've asked all the 10 questions. So my first question is, the general matters of $436,000 seems to be a large catch-all. Would you please break down in general terms what one might expect to find in this category?
It is a big catch-all category, the $436,000 item. I can give a couple examples. In fact, I can think of four right away that might be included or that is included in that. Examples would include a review and development of ordinances, development of, I'm sorry, the debt policy review was one item I'm recalling. General public records requests, along with, because it was an election year, I do remember general elections-related matters also being categorized to that.
Okay. In the city council category, we spent roughly $52,000. Will you please elaborate further as to the typical nature of these expenses?
Again, through example, I think the city council policy and procedures manual is certainly something that comes to mind. Occasionally, we're dealing with FPPC research-related issues. We regularly have to offer ethics training to the council, and certainly there's an inclusion of research involving specific council-related matters.
Okay. And does our planning department have recurring legal fees, or is the approximate $41,000 an extraordinary expense?
No, the planning department, the way they function, they do have recurring legal expenses. They are represented when we do have those public meetings. So with that, it's the attendance of an attorney from the city attorney's office, along with preparation before and follow-up after those meetings. So that would be the recurring nature of planning-related expenses.
In the category for the Garcia TRO, are you able to confirm whether this line item expense was approved by a vote of the city council for our mayor's legal defense?
It was, yes.
Since there's a separate line item expense for another of my colleagues, Councilmember Blanca Gomez, is it safe to say that sometime between April 2018, when you began this 12 month? this 12-month summary, and when I assumed office that the council approved a legal defense for her? If not, please explain the expenditure of $93,409.98.
The council did not approve legal defense separately for her. When we did, look at the number, it did cause us a little surprise, but when we dug into it, it reminded us of the voluminous nature of work that is undertaken on Councilmember Gomez's behalf. The items that stick out or stand out by example involve the 30-plus or minus individual public records requests that she has submitted, a variety of legal opinions and responses requested and offered to her during the course of time, and then research of various code and policy-related violations by Ms. Gomez herself.
Okay, but nothing present, excuse me, prevents a council member from making a public records request of her own city, is that correct?
That's correct.
If you know, can you tell me approximately how much of the expenditure shown was to fulfill the public records requests, not, not including any cost for the duplication of records?
I don't have an exact number. I'd probably have to estimate, and if I had made an estimation, it'd be about 40% of those total costs.
Does that include ancillary costs for the retrieval of documents? If not, are you able to estimate those costs?
No, it does not include it. Certainly would require a considerable amount of time to be able to do that. We can't if it's the desire. Would take quite some time to find all those indirect costs.
Okay, so since the records requests originate from private citizen Gomez, is the general assumption that the information obtained is for personal use and not in furtherance of her official duties as a council member? Will you please briefly explain your answer?
It, it's really hard for me to decide if it's for personal use or not. The nature of the requests are just that, requests in themselves without any real meaningful conversation, dialogue between staff to try to understand the nature of what it is Councilmember Gomez is trying to seek out or accomplish. They're just general, so they, they traditionally just involve response. So it's, there's really no way for us to tell if it's for personal or professional purposes.
Is any of the records that are being requested documentation that would have already been received by her?
Yes.
Okay. And then my last question is, does Parks and Recreation have recurring legal fees, or is the nearly $14,000 figure an extraordinary expense?
They do, and it kind of varies. I think one item that comes to mind that is a recurring nature, because it's real estate-related, Parks Division is involved quite routinely in dealing with facility agreements for the rental or use of a number of our facilities throughout the town to be used by community groups for whatever purpose that community group represents.
All right. Thank you. Madam Mayor, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Has this type of document ever been requested before? Where a listing of a year of, from the general budget for legal expenses? Is this the first time, or is this a custom?
It's not something that I'm aware of, having been requested in the past.
Secondly, I would like to know, who has the final approval of any of these legal costs? Because some of these calls I, we have not had, we have not approved. So what are the rules, regulations and policies in regard as to payment?
I, I think the basic rule is so long as they fit within the budget allowed, especially as it deals with the, the council-related items, so long as it fits within the budget, we work with it.
Has any legal expenses ever been voided or disapproved? Or are they generally accepted?
No. I, I do know, in fact, that we review the, the bills. In fact, my assistant has on numerous occasions had to actually question and even kick back some charges that weren't believed to be accurate or appropriate. So it, it isn't something that we just, citywide, just randomly accept. We do review and challenge them.
No, there was, there is recommendation whether to accept or not.
That is correct. And because there's so many different natures of, of billings, for so many different subject matters, we do depend fairly heavily upon the department heads that are responsible for different areas of the city. And so when we do receive the bills, each of the departments are asked specifically to look at their portion and verify that first it was work asked for or sought, and then in fact, the, the billing is appropriate in terms of what's been asked for and what's been provided.
Who has the final approval when it comes to council persons in the question of legal expenses?
Well, ultimately, that comes down to the city manager being responsible for the budget.
So I'm assuming that every listing that we have here has been itemized with actual proof, correct? In other words, it's not just a number. It can be proven to be true.
That is correct. These do cross-reference to actual, actual bills.
Thank you.
I just have a comment. I know a lot of changes have taken place in regard to this council, and time moves on, but in the past, sometime past, and believe me, I don't remember how long ago, but the policy was that legal request to the city, the city attorney works for the council, the city manager has to work for the council. When there was a request for a legal opinion, it had to come from the whole council, individual, my understanding is individual council members weren't entitled to legal opinions. They could make the request, it went to the manager, the manager then made the determination if it had been answered in the past, or had been dealt with, or the person should have known, or a copy could be provided. And if it's something new beyond that, it would go to the city attorney for a legal opinion in accordance with the budget that was adopted. And this would be monitored monthly with a quarterly report. If it went beyond that, city council had to approve of the legal opinions. After all, we do hire the attorney and the manager. And so I'm really surprised that some of these figures have gotten so high without the city council's approval. Not being critical, I'm just saying that it may be something we need to look at, because I think without a clear policy, the manager's caught in a catch-22, and so is the attorney. And these are rather extraordinary fees. Most of them can't be avoided, some can. I think it's a matter that we need to look at in the very, very near future.
I have a comment too. It's very clear to the audience, those watching me on social media, those being streamlined, that the amount of information that I request is because clearly I will never get a vote from any council member, Jones, Ramirez, Cox, or Garcia. And so these are the tactics that they use to try to embellish Councilmember Gomez doing all this. Well, as if as a council member who serves and advocates for you as our community, I'm not able to request data to make knowledgeable information come through through votes as an individual member through the California Public Records Request is what I have done, and I will continue to do. Regardless of the loopholes that you think you are timing, it's not going to happen, because this is a public right, not necessarily a council team right. And so that's one of the benefits that we have through our state legislators that are able to adopt things, so that when we have teams that don't want to function as teams and want to silence the masses, who is being advocated by a particular council member, is not going to happen. And lastly, Cox and Kennedy didn't have an approval over this council to have legal opinion to be submitted formally either. But of course, they're not going to bring stuff like that over here to you, because in a team of four, they need to target the one person in a new election, because that's what you do. Everything is political and is politicized. And that's why you can see that up here, when we try to represent you, there's going to be a chasm. There is no bifurcation in terms of trying to get all of us.
You have 30 seconds.
Our fiduciary duties to assist you. And I think that's so apparent, that just me reiterating it just creates the narration of why we know we have to come to council meetings and keep accountability to every single council member and our executive teams and our status quo, business-as-usual mentalities.
Madam Mayor, may I ask if I have any additional time to ask one follow-up question?
As a point of order, you don't have any time.
You are out of order, Ms.
Madam Mayor, you can grab the time if you so wish.
I, I'm sorry, Councilmember Cox?
Need a motion. I make a motion that we grant additional time for any of the council members to respond to this item, because it's very necessary. It needs to be discussed, especially in light of what I heard, Ms. Gomez indicate that Kennedy and I had free access to legal opinions, which is absolutely untrue, and she's well-known.
So I'll second your motion.
Not true. So I make a motion to grant additional time. Mayor, you have the gavel.
Second.
To individuals who wants to finish their comments.
I second the motion.
It's already been seconded.
Call for the vote.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez voting no.
Is there a specific amount of additional time?
To give an additional.
Questions, as I understand it, are people wanting to finish their comments?
Yes. I, I'll comment during the actual comment period once.
Okay.
I, I, okay. I don't know that there's going to be any motion that comes forward on this, but, so, just to be clear, because I think Councilmember Cox raised a very good point about individual council members not unilaterally directing our city attorney to provide a legal opinion, that that comes by way of the council as a whole. I understand that. But some of these charges, and I'll just bring out Councilmember Gomez as for example, this is something, the, the nature of the requests and the work that was needed to be done would not come before the council necessarily, because some of the matters were of an urgent nature, and public records requests, the council has no say in regardless. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct. I think the right way to characterize that is that they're generally requiring administrative, administratively-natured work, part of our regular daily business.
And that's within your purview to make those decisions?
Correct.
Using that as, as an example. And I think I'll reserve, I, I just have a, a, a comment or two to make when we get to that point. So that concludes my questioning.
Thank you.
No, except that, except that we're all here trying to accomplish the same thing. And if we need an education in regard to why we're here, we have the League of California Cities, we have the government codes, we have anybody can sit on, read and study them. But one of the things that I kind of get the idea, and it's on my own opinion, is that one day I was talking with staff in a casual way, and two of the staff members were talking about this list of public records requests, and it was simply meant to harass. And, you know, and so we'll show you, we have a list of 50 questions that shouldn't have been asked to begin with, but we're entitled to them. And we're going to come a point that it may be the public right to make a request for legal opinion, or a request for public records. But my understanding is, is that after five years, we don't have to keep certain records, and they're not entitled to those requests. So we need to find out exactly what staff has to respond to. Most of the time, it's not a problem, but I understand it's become a problem. When you have individuals that make up to 35 and 40 requests, it's just harassing, and we know it. The nature of the question, staff should not have to spend an inordinate amount of time answering those. I don't want to keep the public from getting critical questions asked, but make, come in and make a contract to go back, or ask for a question for a contract that happened 25 years ago, has no relationship to what we're doing, has no relationship to any discussions with something, dredge, dredge up something. My opinion ought not be answered, you know. So, but I, I want us to look at that. I want to see what we really have to do with public records request. Because we can't afford to have the taxpayers, ratepayers cough up more money because somebody wants to harass the staff, and that's what it's, thank you.
Anyone else?
I want to reserve mine for comment two.
So I move on now to.
We have speaker cards, I believe, on this.
I'm sorry?
If you have speaker cards on the side.
Yes, that's my next. Yes. I'm moving on to speaker cards, and I do have some here. First one is Bob Harriman.
Good evening, counsel. A lot of my questions were pretty much addressed, but I would just like to say, and I've said it in the past, Councilwoman Gomez is getting her staff reports, and she's ignoring them. And then she turns around and she comes in here, she asks a question, she knows the answer, and she's wasting a lot of time and my tax dollars. Now, she sits up here continuously and says she's trying to save the taxpayers' money, okay, which is a crock. At $92,000, and extra time and labor and whatever else, however else you want to categorize it, the staff, our city clerk and our staff have much more important things to do, okay? So I would, I would say that she should start doing her homework, just like I do on the planning commission, okay? I don't ask stupid questions. I don't tell Mr. Webb to go check on this for me and do this or do that, okay? So I think that we need to adopt some rules as to how far, and as example, Councilman Cox said, how far back she wants something. If it's pertinent to anything, I think somebody, I don't know if it would be the city manager, but there has to be somebody, and I'm sure there is, that looks at these, some of them very stupid questions that don't even apply, and he can make the discretion that if it's even worth spending our time on it, okay? $92,000, okay. So she sits up here and she complains about legal fees, her and her other crony over here, same thing, constantly complaining about legal fees, constantly. Everybody says, you're spending the taxpayer money. And I look on this report, and she's at $93,000, $93,000 of, of virtual waste, a waste of my money, my tax dollars, and everyone else that lives here in Victorville, okay? So I would ask that from now on, if it means consolidating heads, however, we need to do it, we need to, to have some kind of discretion as to if what she's requesting is worth our time, all right? I'm, I'm done. I think the city should be done and wash their hands, especially at $93,000. The city, the city clerk's office has a million things to do, and spending all this time.
Your time is up.
On all this stuff is ridiculous.
Thank you. Maggie Martin?
Good evening, Your Honor, counsel. I don't have my glasses, so I'm going to have to go like that. First of all, you know what I hear about out of her mouth all the time? I hear that she has a humongous persecution complex stamp on the front of her forehead. Really? It's persecution complex. It's a mental disorder. Okay, so I have a letter here from Mr. Dave Barnowski's office dated March of 2019, referenced my public records request in February of 2019. I'm going to do the best I can. Please accept the correspond, let me see if that's even relevant. Hold on, da-da-da-da-da-da-da. Two categories of documents I requested. Number one, all document request of Blanca Gomez for Doc she should have been aware of, I'm sorry, she could have been aware of, had she been prepared before council meetings. And two, how many had, I'm sorry, how many business cards and all city staff attorney costs and staff time related to her requests? Initially, a local agency is under no duty to create a record that does not exist at the time of the request, government co- government code cited. Category one of your request seeks only those documents, I'm sorry, only those document requests from Blanca Gomez for documents of which she could have been aware prior to city council meetings. It is important to note that your request does not seek specific documents and requires the city to speculate, does not speculate on the personal knowledge of Blanca Gomez. As a result, category one does not seek, it's just basically a clarification dropdown. Notwithstanding the above, I discussed your request with Mr. Dave Barnowski and was informed pursuant to his discussion with you on February 19th this year, that perhaps your request would be satisfied if the city could provide a general number of pages which have been requested by Ms. Gomez. Following requests, Ms. Stevens, Ms. Roche provided you with a quantity and cost of business cards given to Blanca Gomez, which amounts to 7,750 cards at a cost of 51439. In addition, Ms. Gomez's request for documents pursuant to the act has resulted in a production of approximately 73,907 pages of responsive public records. At least one of these requests is ongoing. These documents do not encompass day-to-day requests from staff, staff receives from Ms. Gomez in the course of her duties as a council member. Many of these requests would likely be exempt from discussion under the act, et cetera. Okay, hold on a minute. So basically, I'm going to sum it up in the last nine seconds. It's exactly what Mr. Harriman just said. $93,000, she's a waste of our money, a waste. Put a limit on how much money she can spend for legal help.
Romero Rodriguez.
Everyone's getting played here, especially us, the taxpayers. We got a report of all the firehouses that turned from county to city, and we even got an itemized bill for $2 for a battery for a clock on the wall, and also for some lighter fluid sprinkled on the grass, because they spray paint, they sprinkled the name of their number of their org, of their group of firemen. We had that itemized. Why can't we have itemized exactly those $93,000 or $40,000? But you know why? It's simple. It's a witch hunt. Didn't you get the memo? Haven't you read Orwell? Haven't you listened to Carlin at least? We just want people to go up there, not ask any questions, do as you're told, vote, and then don't ask questions, and shut down, shut up. But you know what? $93,000, $514 for cards? Heck, I get them for $19 for 500. But you know what? We're being scammed. Somebody's always padding the bill. And look, somebody making $100,000 a year, that's $48 an hour. So when I go apply for my yard sale permit and get the papers and everything, takes that lady, or that person, I'm sorry, half an hour, that's $24 that the city spent on me. What about somebody making $316,000 a year? That's $151 an hour. What about that person taking all that time to send you, push a button, send or print? But you know what? If that person took two hours, that's $300. But he's still there working, whether he's doing that or not. That's his job, or that's that person's job. And whether you're asking for it, or I'm asking for it, it doesn't matter. You're looking for us. And these $93,000, it's all padded and stuff. It's really unbelievable. There's a K and D and all these other people. You know, last week, we didn't get a chance to listen to that procure America thing, whatever. We never even got to vote on that. It's not the agenda now. But some people, you know, are trying to make it seem like you're the bad person, but actually, you're asking questions for us. And whether the narrative of other people over here grandstanding and showing their privilege in front, and you know what? Shut up, don't ask any questions. No. That's the reason you guys are up there. You're asking the questions for us. Because not everybody's here. Nobody was told that the meeting had been changed. But the less people know, the better things get passed. But you know what? Forget the $93,000. Should be $200,000, because then you're not doing your job right, Blanca.
Thank you.
Those were the only speaker cards that I had. Ms. Jones, did you want to, did you have any other suggestions or?
I have no motion to make. My view, when I requested this item, was that it just be an informative piece for the council, and with the stated purpose of having a better understanding as to what the projections were for the legal expenses going forward. But I do have comments whenever you're ready.
So there is no motion or second required, therefore. I'll turn it over to our city clerk.
I do have comments, however.
Okay. No motion.
Okay, no motion.
But there are further questions or further discussion or comments?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as I just stated a moment ago, the reason that this item was brought forward was to get a better understanding of the projections for the 2019-2020 budget, and to have a better feel of what trending expenses would be going forward. So contrary to an assertion that I've just heard this evening, that this is a witch hunt, I must take umbrage at that, since the council, having been presented with the basis for the request, voted unanimously to bring this item forward, and that in fact included Councilmember Gomez herself. I work very hard to be fair and gracious to all of my colleagues, and I never begrudge any of my colleagues for their ideas, their perspectives, or their votes. And to suggest otherwise truly is beneath the dignity of this council. Thank you.
One else?
Just to demystify, Councilmember Cox's comment about information and going how far we can go back. Well, today's a perfect example. We went back probably 40 decades ago just to look at today's closed meeting session. That's just to show you how far back we have to go with legal counsel and our executive team to get a better outlook of what is happening with VVWR and any litigation processes.
That is closed session discussion. That's privileged.
VVWR, it's open. We already know there's litigation .
You do not have VVWR on the regular agenda tonight. It was in closed session. Discussion about it is inappropriate at this point.
So that's to show you how far back we do need to go. And in terms of the terminology that was just presented today, in my opinion, for the first time, about harassment, and that I'm using it to harass the staff, is very interesting, because the inception of this council, I have been dealing not only with discrimination, but also a very hostile work environment with individuals. Recently, I was accosted by Sophie Smith, and I did put that in our record, and I also submitted a complaint, a formal complaint outside of this division, because this has been continuous, and it's not fair to me, and it's not fair to the people that I advocate. And so to call this a witch hunt was the best terminology that I could have heard from someone who comes out and shows his face and is able to use a public comment noting that he might get retaliation if he ever were to submit his information verbatim to us. And so it's not fair. Our council member here was partisan. She was biased. And not only do I say that it is, a lot of us see it that way. And if it's not, let's not address the questions and make them 50% for Blanca Gomez and the others not. If we would have done that, we would have played a more careful game, and we wouldn't showed that it was a witch hunt, and it was political. But unfortunately, we have differing opinions, and the opinions have been set on the record, and we choose to decide what the interpretation is based on the speakers that have spoken.
Madam Mayor, so with regard to the questions that I asked, it was, many of them were related to the $93,000 expenditure. And I might just concur with our city manager, who said that that number was a surprise. Well, certainly, it was a surprise to me, so I wanted to learn more about it. And I think it would be appropriate, given the comments that have just been made about being subjected to discrimination and a hostile work environment, I think was the term. I must ask, at this time, is Councilmember Gomez contemplating litigation against the city?
You know, it's very interesting. That is not a topic matter, and as a point of order, that should not be discussed in this matter. But of course, your colleagues will not agree to that, and you can probably hear them, and I would be submitting another complaint, because we're going outside of what we're supposed to be discussing at this matter. And this is the very reason why I state the point that I state, because any information that would become privileged, and I were to try to get it from the city, the city would use a strategic tactic and say, Mrs. Gomez can no longer get any information, because now it is privileged information. Luckily, I learned from the best, who sit up here, very intellectual people, we play the same games, and we learn. The only thing is I happen to tell the people what it is that's happening behind here.
Madam Garcia, may I ask our attorney if my question was out of order?
I believe it was related to what we were discussing. It was in order.
Any further comments?
It is now 6:02. We could take a recess so that we can participate in the national night out, or?
You only have three items, and then public comment. I think if you were to .
Continue.
It's council's decision ultimately, but.
Okay. So we will move on to item D2, settlement agreement between the city, the Victorville Water District, and Western Pacific Housing Dr. Horton, and various prior and current owners of tracks 14751 and 14992. The recommendation is that the city council and board of directors approve the settlement agreement for execution by the mayor. Are there any questions of staff, by council members?
I have none. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Jim, any question?
Yes. So for item D2, which is the prepaid water ownership tracks, 14751 and 14992, providing a refund of overpayments and ratifying the application of fee credits, this is a settlement. This is costing us money. So we go into closed session, and then we come out here, just so you know, make the correlation closed session, and then we come out here. You might want to pay close attention to these types of settlements. And so this is, what is the history of the declarative found in the discussion reporting, which reads as follows? The sum represents meters and connection fees overpaid by Dr. Horton on behalf of Western in 2018. The Water District had required payment of the said fees when Western began requesting water meters and connections for the homes that it was building in track 14751, because at that time, Western had not yet established itself as a rightful owner of the meter connection fees prepaid by the original developer. Was this item also in our closed session? Do you recall the dates? I think we'll be spending a little over, just under half a million for this one, since we're so careful about talking about monies and who spends monies and who asks the irrelevant stupid dumb questions around here.
Keith, do you want to respond? I mean, I think the staff report is pretty self-explanatory, and this is not the city paying monies out of the general fund. This is a reimbursement for monies paid by a developer that we basically were finally able to sort out. They had paid them, and we needed to determine who was the rightful owner of the monies that were paid. It was basically an overpayment, and so we reimbursed that developer for an overpayment .
It was prepaid money. That was overpaid.
And I might add, this item was a similarly-natured item, was brought to the council's attention some time ago. And really, this involves us as the Victorville Water District, serving as a successor to the Baldi Mesa Water District, where I believe back in 2005 or 2006, it's probably somewhere in the staff report, that entity entered into an agreement with then ownership of the subject property, that ownership being substantially different than today. And in fact, over that period of time, since 2006, there's been multiple ownerships. So effectively, what has occurred in this particular case is, until we've been able to very clearly document the relationship and confirm the ownership and the rightful owner of these credits, as this tract has been building out and is building out as we speak, we've been collecting fees just to make sure that we weren't effectively gifting away a public fund, until we can prove certainty as to the ownership change over time, perfecting the ownership change over time to eventually bestow these credits to this developer.
So in other words, we are not gifting money. We're just.
This is reimbursing .
Rembments for prepaid.
For monies owed.
Correct. Okay. Anyone else?
Staff report was clear.
It was very clear. I do have one speaker card. Romero Rodriguez.
I've been reading this, I've been reading this settlement, 30 pages, twice already, and I still don't understand how it goes. Please explain to me, Joe Public, how it goes from $30,000 to all of a sudden $475,000, and then $217,681. And also, itemize, please, itemize. And just give us a ballpark figure. How much are the attorney fees costing us for this settlement? I don't think they're doing it for free or pro bono. So how much is the attorney making? How much is the city paying? Because I don't think it's just we're not gifting nothing. Nobody does nothing for nothing. This is just passing it on. No, it's nothing. But there was money out there since 2006. I don't think people would want to say, you know, never mind, don't pay me any interest on that money. What about the fees, attorney fees? What about the nuisance fees, or whatever the attorney's charged for having this money sitting down? What if that person never would have came up? He would have lost out on that money? Or did somebody just went through the books and found out, hey, they owe us this money? Would the city willingly would have given that money back? So we need to have these little things itemized, not just say $93,000 for so, so person. We need to itemize to see how much the attorney fees is costing the city, because this is not a free thing. And the money, we didn't have that much money. What about $217,000? Because, you know, 85 meters at $5,000 do not add up to close to $750,000. Thank you.
That was the only card that I had. Therefore, I need a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the staff recommendation on this item.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. So it's very important that we read the tonality in who responds. The craft of the narration and the titles of city attorney and city manager being who respond to my inquiries should say much. And if you look at the report for the fiscal impacts, you will notice that the approval of the settlement agreement provides for and orders a refund of the amount of nearly half a million dollars to be paid to Dr. Horton. Additionally, a deposit will remain on hand to provide the credit for a meter and connection fees, whether we call it credit fee, whether we call it taxpayer dollars. Whose money is it coming? Not from my individual pocket. This was submitted by Tara Taguchi, the deputy city attorney, and the recommendation is for council to approve the attached settlement agreement. So let's keep watching for our monies and where it goes. And the language is very pertinent as to what you're listening to. So whether you hear laughter and someone saying, ha, 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 this is only this, money, it's all about money. Where is it coming from? Our general fund? Which fund of our 81 funds or 88 funds is it coming from?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I? So what we just heard was a mischaracterization of the facts found in the backup data. So clearly, this matter has been handled through a settlement agreement to in particularly memorialize the history that has taken place with Dr. Horton, et cetera.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now we move on to . Now we move on to item D3. Award of contract to Christianson Brothers, Inc. for the water main relocation on Palmdale Road. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District award a construction contract to Christianson Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $91,745.63 for the water main relocation on Palmdale Road.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members of staff at this time?
Questions?
Well, I have a question. Caltrans made the request that we do that, which is, they make the request to Edison or all the other utilities. Is that because of the widening project? That's what the staff said. So that's 395. Where are they widening it? I thought 395 was done.
So this project is actually on Palmdale Road, and it's from Cobalt Road to US 395. And what they're going to be doing is installing medians, center medians at certain locations and shoulders. Because Caltrans had the prior rights, they had the right of way, the Water District is responsible for the relocation cost.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question. This contract was awarded because our department was not able to accomplish the work? Or what reason was it for that we had to award this contract? Is that the reason for it?
That is the reason. Sometimes, our own water crews will do certain work for relocating a water main or replacing a water main, but usually, when the project is larger, or if their workload can't accommodate it, we would contract it out.
Do you consider this a savings in the fact that we gave this contract rather than otherwise?
Um...
Because I noticed it was a relocation.
I don't know necessarily that it'd be a savings, but our in-house water crews can only accommodate so much work, because they're often maintaining the system, and what they do tends to be a smaller-type project. This is a larger project. Normally, we would contract that.
Right, exactly. So can you tell me, how did you select this particular company in regards to the construction? Is it, do they have a known history of being effective, efficient, superior?
They do. All the bidders have previous experience with the city, and all of them have a good work history on previous contracts.
In other words, they meet the requirements of your department in regards to the construction that they were going to do, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion and a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the City Council take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Madam Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D4. Grant acceptance and budget appropriation for FEMA Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council accept the grant, authorize the city's funding match, and approve the amended associated budget appropriation for the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program in the amount of $93,603 by adopting Resolution Number 19-062.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff? One?
Yes, I have a question. So there's a list of bulleted points in the discussion portion of the report. Does the fire department and other pertinent benefactors of the grant have an action plan in place and up to date to share with council? Yes or no?
Madam Mayor and council, the bullet points that are being referenced is part of the plan. The planning process will identify the current hazards in the community, the risks, and also the vulnerabilities. And as part of this process, all of those points will be addressed with all of our stakeholders in order to make the community safer and better prepared.
My second thing is, would the representing departments be able to provide an overview of the dates, the times, and how the city plans to increase, build, identify, align, and communicate the developing hazard mitigation plans for the city, which will be in partnership with state and other local governments?
It would be premature to be able to provide that timeline at this point. And then, once the hazard planning process begins and is completed, then that's when we will be able to work with our other stakeholders and partners in identifying mitigation strategies that we can then implement or recommend for implementation.
And what percentage goes to administration versus the actual programs? Talking about dollars and cents here.
The way the matching grant is set up is, there is per se no administration. It's, we have a grant, and then we have in-kind match that, so staff time is able to be put against the overall grant, providing us with, you know, coverage of the cost.
Then what was the city's scope of work that was conducted that the federal refunds are being dispersed?
The hazard mitigation plans are supposed to be updated every five years. And so this is part of the normal process. The other thing to consider for this particular process is, there are three additional annexes that are being covered. The first being drought, the second being climate change, and the third being terrorism. And those annexes were not covered in previous. They will be covered in our, the hazard mitigation plan before you for consideration.
I have no further questions. Thank you for your response.
One else? No. I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion and a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Madam Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes, I actually appreciate the level of detail that was rendered by the chief right now, because not too many months ago, after I came with a conference at Naleo, which is a national conference, I was able to bring in some of the issues that would be a national catastrophe or something that's out of the ordinary, which would've included things like a drought or anything out of the foreplex of our vision. And for you to have talked about the hazard study program, which I'm going to call, with analyzing drought, climate change, and terrorism was one of the main forefronts that I had asked this council on a full-scale vote to try to adopt, so that we could've brought it forth. And I'm glad you thought about it without listening to the proposition and took the analysis and our bring it forth. So I actually appreciate that. It's not my credit, but you actually get credit for that, even though I brought it in earlier.
Any further comments? Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Madam Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to public comments. And this is a three-minute time limit. And I do have some cards. First one is Bob Harriman. After Bob will be Chef Basil.
I would like the council, I'd like to request the council that from here on out, we adopt a resolution that any council member that has to be taken out of the chamber relinquish their pay for the month. Okay? So if we could adopt a censure policy to prevent this disruptive behavior, it would really be beneficial. Due to the several contentious interactions between elected officials, this policy would ensure city business is handled professionally and in timely fashion. If we're going to continue to have the council member embarrass our city, what an embarrassment that was, then I think that there has to be consequences. So I would recommend that the council look into having anybody on the council that has to be removed forfeit their pay for the month, and that would be in discretion of the city council. So I would like you guys to maybe put that on the agenda, and we can talk about it in further detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Chef Basil?
Good afternoon, City Council. Chef Basil, former Army homeless veteran. First of all, I want to thank, on May 18th, we had our big veterans gala, and we had about 1,200 people and some of the honorees. We gave most of them theirs, but I think Mr. Cox got his. I think you got yours. Bob hadn't gotten yours yet. Mr. Harriman, I don't think Bob's gotten his. But we just want to thank those, we're going to get those awards to them, because we have a policy. I don't care what your politics are, I don't care who likes who, but if you were a veteran of mine, of ours, that's what we do, because we were brothers' arms when we were on the field, and that's how we operate. And then now I want to get to, I want to really think, as you know, about the big hurricane that came, and, you know, our team again went out, just like we did, and Houston Hurricane Flood, where we fed over 3 million people. This time, we were in Torona, and my wife put together the team. And when I asked for help, I just got to give a shout-out to our mayor. You know, she gave us a big boom-boom help that, you know, that really helped feed the people. It was really great. I want to give honor to Maggie. Three times Maggie came with goods. Maggie, thank you very much. Three times, even today. Denise Wells, she rode up there with us. I want to say thank you to that. Manny the Duck, and I want to thank my wife in Desert Manor, who gave us at least $60,000 worth of food, and we went up there on 110, and we gave it out. And on December, not correction, on November 23rd, pre-Thanksgiving, my wife and I and chefs, ACF chefs, because I'm a national chef, we're going to feed the entire city, all 1,900. We're going to lay it out for them. And Mayor, I'd like for you and those who could come with us, Mayor Procham, as I already said, she's rolling up with us and going cook. And Ms. Jones, I heard you can burn. I know you can get down. I mean, I know you can cook. And all the other council, and Garcia, you know, I know your history. You was Miss Pageant and all that, so I know you can cook. I'd just like for all, for those who want to come, including everybody, come help me cook. Come help me feed 1,900 people. And I really want to thank my wife. I really stand up Lesette. She just, she put it all together, and it's really difficult to feed a city. And I'm asking, you know, whatever you can help us get food, but, you know, I got to say this, this last couple of 30 seconds, you know, whether people like myself, Maggie, whoever, you know, Maggie came through like a champ, and I didn't ask Maggie. She came to the house with a F-50, 150, with food, you know. And Denise, you know, I'm so proud of you, you know. I'm really proud of you, you know. I really am. And I just want to say thank you for all those who gave, but we're going to continue to help that city. Victorville was recommended, and without your big contribution, Mayor, we wouldn't have got some of the things we got. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Maggie, Martin?
Good evening again, Mayor and council. Couple of things. I don't know if any of you up there have realized that when a certain member speaks up here at the podium, a certain person speaks up here, I leave. That's a good time for me to exit, stage left, right, whatever it is. Because, you know, I'm tired of people coming up this podium, beating the dead horse. It doesn't matter what any of you say to that person. It's just a male version of Gomez. That's all it is. It doesn't matter what you say, what facts you present, they just want to believe, they're the persecuted, they're the underdog. I mean, this is a person who says the US Census Bureau didn't even count the Hispanic rights. So the Hispanic population rate, are you kidding me? Really? So I just wanted to say that, and I wanted to say, basically, I had an exhausting week, and I'm sorry, so I'm not really functional here, but I'm going to assure you that I'm over this one right here. She's not even looking at me, because she knows I'm talking about her. I'm over it. And I'm going to do everything, everything, to the core of my being to make sure this woman is not re-elected. And let me tell you, in a few months, I'll be coming loaded for bear, and you all are going to hear about it. And she'll be finished, washed up, tail between her legs, leaving town.
Thank you. Ramiro Rodriguez?
A few years back, we asked for translation services in Spanish. The response was, I'd rather pay the electric bill for the Little League than give you guys any money. Other response was, you guys should learn to speak American. Now, I am on a quest that the Hispanics are being eliminated from the census and being blocked in all sorts as white, but what that has, it hinders us from actually having a different colors within our city. How do you justify having 100% white population of police officers or fire department when we have a 55% Hispanic population up here and a 19% black population? I don't see any black or Hispanic police officers up here. But you know what? I'm beating a dead horse. You don't really need to have something big to offend people, to really subdue them with words and the narrative that comes up here and saying how the immigrants, how that person always tells me to go back to where I came from. When you pay a paid protester to talk, a Mexican person to talk about Mexican people, to say they were all drug dealers and police killers, we don't have to go to El Paso to see the hatred. We don't have to go to Ohio. We see it here. The same people, same narrative. We're coming up here just to ask for our rights that belong to us. But I've heard several times from that person saying, "I wish it was like it was before." What does that mean? What does she mean by, what does that person mean by that? Was it was before? The populace has changed from 80% to now we're 55%. Mr. Kennedy got up and walked away. He never heard anything more racist when I said, "Hey, you guys are now 17%. 3% are leaving." And that's the reality. It has changed. Few hundred years ago, it was American Indians and Mexicans living here. Then came the English, and then came the Irish, and then came the Italians. But we pay the same. We also, we pay our taxes. We have the same right as everybody else. Nobody owns that basketball. We can go out there and play with the ball as much as we want to, because we're taxpayers also. So we don't have white skin. We're taxpayers. I'm born here. My son's born here. My grandsons are born here. And we want to teach them that it's for everybody. So when I hear, "I'd rather pay," that's denying me my right to ask. If they, maybe they would've said, "Hey, let's do a study." No. But then you see the tyranny right away, and that's what hurts. That's why you come up here and you sound off. We're not beating a dead horse. Thank you.
Bob Nelson? Bob Nelson?
Yes, Bob Nelson, I'm from Asperia. You have a serious problem with your three-minute rule, council members. Three serious problems, actually. Quote, "Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending on the number of individuals wishing to speak." According to the California Supreme Court's Enrique standards for time limit rules on roster speakers, your meeting rule is unconstitutional on its face. To avoid repressing First Amendment protected speech during a public meeting, appine the court, a roster speaker time limit must include a narrow specificity provision, limiting its enforcement to meetings where a time limit is necessary to ensure that all wishing to speak might be heard in the time reasonably set aside for the meeting. Your three-minute rule lacks this essential provision. The second problem, repressing First Amendment protected speech during a public meeting was such an illegal... was such an illegal rule as a violation of the United States Code Title 18, Chapter 13, Section 241, which stated is a felony, quote, "for two or more persons to conspire, to injure, oppress, threaten, or intimidate any citizen in the free exercise or enjoyment of any right or privilege secured to him by the Constitution or laws of the United States, as detailed in this ephemeral press pamphlet which I've attached to my speaker form." Third problem. Former county DA Michael Ramos filed a PC 403 case on an unlawful disturbance of a county board of supervisors meeting in 2004, had the case dismissed at its first court appearance, and told the media why. Because, reported this Sun editorial of September 18th, 2004, supervisors too harsh on critics. Essentially, I did nothing wrong in refusing to yield the rostum on being told my three minutes were up. The editorial concluded the DA's office is to be commended for its validation of Nelson's legitimate right to dissent. The DA reneged on this validation of our right to ignore this three-minute rule, filing a case with three council unlawfully disturbing the Asperia City Council meeting in 2017 by breaches of the three-minute rule. But at the 65th court appearance for People versus Nelson on June 26th this year in the Victorville courthouse, a second jury said, "I did nothing wrong in breaching the three-minute rule during the June 20th and August 1st Asperia meetings," with the guilty verdict for the June 6th three-minute rule breach on appeal. So, a former DA, and now a jury, has said it is not a crime to violate your three-minute rule, at least most of the time. Our founding fathers, with the First Amendment, gave us two rules for making community decisions. Make them during meetings open to all wishing to attend, with no rule limiting free speech, excepting urgent necessity, of course. If you follow these rules, council members, Victorville tomorrow. Well, thank you. Thank you.
Joe Foggeti? After Joe Foggeti will be James Avery.
I've been traveling a lot, and Gloria, I didn't forget about you. But, you know, I had more fun things to do, but I'll get to you. And I hear you're posting pictures on me on Facebook or whatever. And, you know, from the restraining order, that could be reopened. Would you like that to happen? Rita? Now, it's really sad to see that some student got hit by a car, I guess, in the old town Victorville. I'm sure that crosswalk is not compliant. You had your opportunity to fix it, and somebody got hurt. You just blew me off. This is very important. Now, something happened. Now, I will find out who that student is, and I will make their attorneys well aware of that the city was aware and did nothing. Another lawsuit? You're running for Congress? I don't think so. And? And Rick, I still never heard from Officer Kelly about the accident that took place, a hit-and-run. Was it two or three years ago? Maybe two? And I think I'll come by and have an Internal Affairs investigation. So, I'll do that sometime within the next week. Because it was always promised, I'll call you back, I'll call you back. This is, you know, I guess you're for the criminals, you're not for the people. So, is that how you conduct it? Then recently, I had important information about a crime that took place. And then somebody handcuffed me and put me in a police car. And I'm trying to give information. I'm just a citizen trying to help. Real impressive. Now, I got a citation, take that one to court because that's my arena. I doubt that you'll post it, but if you do, okay, it's not going to be fun. Embarrassing how you treat people.
You are supposed to be directing DA council.
I'll look where I want and keep my mouth shut. I'm talking to him. He's on city council. Okay. I think he understands who I am, so. But it's not really good.
This is a warning.
Okay, it's not really good. You run a horrible city. What's that?
I gave you a warning.
Big deal, from you?
A warning for Foggeti and? James Avery?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Yes. My name's James, this is my wife Betty, and we've been here in Victorville going on a year and a half. We're both from Missouri. And we recently moved into Eagle Ranch. We've been here, like I said, a year and a half, and there is solidarity in my neighborhood and on my block. And I thought I'd come in tonight and address you about the drag racing in our neighborhoods and the shootings, the gunshots. You know, we got concerned here over a week ago about the gunfire and the drag racing. And you can look all over Eagle Ranch and you see signs of a racetrack. I was, you know, on my way here, when I came out to El Paso, I saw rubber marks. Even when I get off, come off Bear Valley and I go down Eagle Ranch Parkway, drag racing marks, donuts, circles, you know, just reckless driving. But I do have to give credit to the after-hours call line to the police department. You know, they have quiet things down a little bit, but just talking, it's not going to solve the problem in our neighborhoods, I don't think. Is there something that you guys have been working on, you know, to update us? Because we don't know, we don't know anything. We just knew.
After the meeting, a staff member will contact you and talk about this. This is generally the time where individuals can bring items to our impression, but we don't dialogue because it's not on the agenda. If it were, a lot of other people may show up to have a discussion. But we do take seriously everything that comes up. And in this case, because it is an issue that we've heard about, either the manager or the Sheriff's Department, I'm sure, will contact you after the meeting and follow up on this.
They will be contacting you.
Okay, because, see, you know, where we come from, we would always have a representative, you know, a councilman.
I understand.
You know, for our district, you know, this is the first time that, you know, I've come in and all the councilmen take care of the whole city, you know, and, you know, I just didn't know.
They will be contacting you.
Okay. All right, okay.
May I make a point of clarification?
I'll stand by to after the meeting.
The Brown Act does not permit us to respond to items that are not on the agenda. That's the rule.
Understood.
And that is the reason why we cannot answer or respond to you or to anyone.
We appreciate it.
I understand.
I think we really, our purpose for being here today is just to bring it to the attention. I'm a marriage and family therapist, I'm a professional. My husband's retired. I'm sure everyone in the neighborhood is moved up there to keep the value of our homes. And I certainly don't appreciate being awakened by gunfire. I don't appreciate some youngsters taking advantage of the streets where they feel like they can just burn rubber, and that's called reckless driving, and it puts danger to the other children in the neighborhood. So, our goal here was just to bring it to your attention, and we're just hoping that something can be done about it.
Like we said, they will be contacting you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And we do understand.
And as a point of order, I'm going to state that council member Cox was not directing staff or the manager. It was merely a clarification. Staff should always be able to address without any council member making that recommendation.
That was the last card that I had. Now, we move on to reports from our city manager.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, in terms of items, I normally have items, but I think one particular item I want to address because I heard it tonight, and it's just the most disturbing thing that I've heard, especially coming from a council member, suggesting that a staff member is accosted, a council member is just outlandish, an absolute distortion of the facts of what really occurred. I am undertaking an investigation because a similar allegation was made by council member Gomez, which we're dealing with. It's also very similar to allegations, many of which have occurred in the past. All have been investigated and found as unfounded. I have a strong suspicion this is another one of those. But to do it in a public meeting, I think certainly we've sunk to a new low by trying to call out a staff member that does nothing but, and has done nothing but, over the last 20 years, served the residents of this city and the council to the best and most professional means possible.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Did you have anything else? Come here? Did you have anything else to report? No? Now, we move on to council members' discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda.
Ms. Jones?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. So, I'm interested in placing on the agenda a closed session item in order that we may have a fuller discussion about the impact and implications of the findings in the City of Victorville Fire Services Transition Status Report dated June 11, 2019. My request has nothing to do with specific individuals or personalities, but rather business. We have a fiduciary duty to the people of our community, meaning that we are expected to make decisions in the best interests of our residents. We are expected to be honest brokers of a well-run city, and this necessarily includes the management of our assets and how taxpayer money is spent. I believe it would be an affront to our citizens for us to roll over and play dead in the face of an ostensibly neglectful and/or cavalier approach to public safety that resulted in the loss of $400,000, excuse me, in excess of $400,000. It was taxpayer money that purchased the assets reported in the June 11 report. Your neighbors and mine spent their hard-earned money to maintain these assets for an ongoing benefit, not only to their families, but to their neighbors. One need only look at the report summary to recognize that Victorville residents deserved more contractually than what it got, much more. There was a contract to provide specific services. We need to take a close look at our legal obligations and what our next steps might be. With that said, Madam Mayor, I move that the council place on the next agenda a closed session item wherein the council determines an appropriate course of action in light of the findings contained in the City of Victorville Fire Services Transition Status Report dated June 11, 2019.
As a point of order, there are rules that govern the closed session items. And one's power as a council member, the power such that is vested to us, does not allow, under closed session rules, the power of the majority to put anything in closed session unless it follows different guidelines. And these have not been expressed at this moment, and I'm not sure if she's aware or we're going to go ahead and narrate it so that it fits an emergency or any of the three other options.
Madam Mayor, I believe I was correct with, in terms of order on my request, but I'd certainly defer to our city attorney.
Yeah, I believe it would be appropriate. It sounded like there's a concern about the need to seek remuneration for amounts expended by the city, and that would obviously lead to potential litigation at some point or some form of legal action.
Was that your motion?
My motion was, and I'll read it again just so it's very clear, that the council place on the next agenda a closed session item wherein the council determines an appropriate course of action in light of the findings contained in the City of Victorville Fire Services Transition Status Report dated June 11, 2019.
Second your motion?
Motion by council member Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with council member Gomez voting no.
And if I have time, Madam Mayor, I have one other request. So, I'm interested in placing an item on the agenda for discussion and possible action related to the dying and or diseased trees on the Green Tree Golf Course. I've been heavy-hearted about this for nearly 10 months when I got my first look at them, but my concern was brought to the fore in light of the June 28 Daily Press article about a tree at James Woody Park in Apple Valley that toppled onto a baseball backstop and utility shed on Father's Day. A large branch was also reported as having fallen next to the visitor at the same park that week. So, as for our golf course, it would be helpful, I believe, for the city council to learn why our long-established trees there are apparently dying and falling over. For example, is it due to disease or lack of ongoing care, such as basic watering? I'd like to ask that we further address potential safety issues related to diseased and/or dying trees on the golf course. So, with that, Madam Mayor, I make the motion that we place on the reasonably soonest agenda an item for discussion and possible action wherein the council may receive a general reporting on the overall health of the trees on the Green Tree Golf Course together with recommendations to address potential safety issues as well as the future nurture of our mature trees.
Second.
Motion by council member Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed?
Abstain.
Aye.
Motion carries. Wait.
Of course, right? I'm just abstaining.
The motion carries with council member Cox abstaining and council member Gomez voting no.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all I had.
Thank you. Did you have something?
Yes, I do. I feel that because of what is happening out there and everywhere regarding crime, violence, I feel that, I read an article of a individual accusing our police as not doing their job. And I feel that this is a misinformation that is being said and being repeated. And I feel very strongly that I would like to put as an item on the agenda for the next time for the police department to give us a report as to the crime and violence that we may have here in Victorville, only because of the fact that I feel that what this individual said is not necessarily true. But to be just and to be fair to all residents, we need to know the truth. And I feel that having a report from our sheriff telling us what is happening and what can we do if there's any type of recommendation is very important for the safety and the health of all our residents. My concern is that life is a beautiful thing, and to lose one individual of your family is a heartbreaking, hurtful situation for life. And I would hate to feel that we are not concerned enough to have our sheriff department tell us what's going on and what can we do if there is anything that's going on that we should take care of. So, my motion is to put on the agenda a report to be given to us and to our audience, to the city, regarding crime and violence in Victorville, so that we are fully aware of what's going on.
Second.
Jacket, yeah, absolutely.
A motion by Mayor Procham Ramirez, seconded by council member Jones.
I would like to modify that to add actual date, line spectrums, because are we receiving six months, three months, two months, 60 days? There is no timeline. I would like a timeline set. If you're looking for the last two years, for the last year and a half, I would like that to be added, and I would leave it at your discretion.
I haven't been here long enough to know the history of Victorville. But being that we were elected in December, I would like personally a report that starts in January to the present. That way, I myself am fully aware of what is going on. I cannot relate to the past, and I do not want to judge the past because things do improve and life is significantly also improving. So, I would prefer the time period to be from January to the present month of-
You have 30 seconds?
I will put it on the motion as to the report.
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Protem Ramirez. Councilmember Jones, do you still want to second that?
Yeah, so I'm presuming that this is a substitute motion in a roundabout way. So, yes, certainly, I will keep to my second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Yes. We had a speaker tonight, I believe, it was a complaint about diversity of the police and fire department. It sounded like it, at least to me. We're very proud of the diversity in our employees with the city of Victorville. I watched the process, I wasn't involved in the fire department, very pleased with what I was seeing. Sheriff's Department, we contract for, so we don't have anything to do with hiring or the employees, and so if the individual would like to make a request, the fire department, police department, they can make that directly to the sheriff. But I do believe since that we have a brand-new fire department, the data would be interesting, and I would like to see the staff follow through with just a short report, if that's possible. I was pleased with what we have, I don't think we violated any laws, but if somebody makes a complaint that there's no diversity, I think we should answer it, so if that's possible, and not violating any confidentiality's or personnel rules, I'd like to make that a motion to put on the agenda, just a short report for public information.
I would be happy to second, I just need to make sure that we can legally request that.
I think you can request it, we'll look into it and see if there's a problem, if there is a problem, you will not get a report, if there's no problem, you will get a report.
Okay.
That's fair.
That's fair.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Gomez, do you have something?
Yes. I've requested this in the past, community has also stated the same thing. Camcorders on our police force is very necessary, not only for public safety, but to bring back the community's trust in this community. There was a pilot program for the city of Apple Valley and Highland by the county that was done, we never heard if it was actually implemented, but for the city of Victorville, we do not have any police officers with any camcorders, and so I would highly recommend for at least two other council members to support the actual implementation of camcorders on Victorville police that we contract in this city. Mind you, it's been voted down before.
Is there a second?
I'd like, I will second if I understand the motion. Do you want the camcorders, or you just want to report on the camcorders?
No, it's actually to implement camcorders on police officers. So, we'll be looking at that in the future consistently.
Well, I'd love to see a report, but I'm not going to direct the sheriff how to do his business. Directing that we direct.
Well, as a council member, we have the power of three. You always tell me to count to three, and when three people say something, it happens, because we do contract with the sheriff's department. The next one is similar to what Cox had responded to for his first one, but not quite. We do need a diversification of our police force, particularly here in the city of Victorville, to reflect our community diversification, to bypass the seniority rules, and to have more bilingual and a diverse workforce. I've gone on police, with police and encounter police not able to communicate a lick, anything other than English, with a Spanish speaker, and I was able to interpret at that moment. How many other situations with any other diversities do we have that same problem? I can expect a lot, so that is my motion, to be able to bring that in.
Is that the first one or the second one? I'm lost.
This is the second one.
Oh, you had, but we, okay.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies.
And then the next one to contextualize what I'm requesting is, unfortunately, the arrest of a resident trying to provide information to assist officers in an arrest has been perceived and shown as not welcomed. However, in my discussions with Captain Bessenger, I was assured that the community input was always welcomed and necessary and not frowned upon. If this is the case, that our residents offer information and feel repressed when we are, what are we doing to change that perspective? And I would like to have this as a discussion and possible action, as a matter, to demystify any variables that have indeed stymied this perception. If we're having individuals that are arrested when they're providing information, I think we can have information from the captain or what we're doing for that training. Anything of that nature to make sure that we're assuring our residents that we need the full cooperation.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies.
Now, we move on to... Did I get everyone? You already did, you already did. Okay, I got everyone, okay. Now, we move on to E4, and this is reports from council members, and I'll have Ms. Gomez give hers first, three minutes.
Go ahead and give me 15 seconds to gather what I'm actually writing.
I'm calling on you for three minutes.
Well, I'm asking you for 15 seconds, because I need to find my place.
Well, no, I'm asking you to start, please.
I'll start when I find my place.
Well, your time starts now.
So, today's meeting was at 4 o'clock. Most of you had no clue and wouldn't have known based on our patterns. They're usually at 5 o'clock. Usually, I would hope to say that our executive administration brings that recommendation and the council goes ahead and adopts it, so that you have at least two weeks, if you watch within two weeks the council meeting, and you would know to be here at 4:00. However, I have had many complaints that lack the accountability of how we are able to notice. 4:00, 5:00, we didn't have any discretion as council, but city administration looks like they did. So, if you didn't read your agenda, you're probably not here. If you think it's at 5:00, you are here, and if you're coming in at 6:00, you've missed a couple of things. Also, I would like for this council to consider the agendas being published. I get mine's paper, hard copies. A lot of you get them online, and I was told by several individuals that the online version says that our closed session starts at 4:00, and the following convening as soon as our 4:00 closed meeting comes, which leaves it up to interpretation if we're going to start, if we finish at 4:30, at 4:35, at 4:50, but our actual hard copy says it starts at 5:00. So, when considering mirroring the hard copies, make sure it mirrors also the one online, that's what I was told today, and I'm hoping that staff is able to make that clarification as pinpoint as possible, so it's not reinterpreted differently. It looks like the city council can place anything on the agenda in closed session by calling it a potential litigation. Pay attention to the key terms that are used strategically as moves by our city council, meaning our city attorney. I don't have a letter stating that the county has claim litigation, so can we just call it? I don't think so. There's nothing that says that we have potential litigation, and if so, nobody mentioned it here. So, we're just putting stuff up the gun, I don't think we have the power to do that. That's a way to manipulate our agendas.
Go ahead.
Let me. I am very pleased to announce that I have been invited as a VIP guest to the Transportation Summit to be held at Disneyland Hotel in Anaheim in September 26, 27. For information, I am your regional council district 65 rep, and I represent the entire high desert cities for you in Los Angeles every first Thursday for the Southern California Association of Governments. So, this is a privilege and an honor to represent the high desert in September regarding transportation and the future of our area.
Yes, thank you very much. So, gosh, over the course of the last few weeks, I've attended an SBCTA meeting and stood in, Councilmember Cox has stood at the VVWRA meeting in mid-July. I was very fortunate and quite blessed to attend the Dreamers, Visionaries, and Leaders Fostering Hope Scholarship Event. It was such a wonderful thing to see our foster youth graduating high school with their visions set high for what they look to in the future. These students had a remarkable academic history, especially in light of the particular challenges that they faced in their lives, and I am so proud of our youth that was able to come, overcome great obstacles in their life to move forward and do great things for our community. Also, with regard to requesting a closed session item, Councilmember Gomez's premise is faulty in that potential litigation doesn't cut one way, it cuts both ways. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, certainly. There being no other business before the council, this meeting is adjourned, so let's please join our police officers and their evening.